The color? Ah. Oh, green, that's the only green one we had and...
I didn't know Larry was still able to get that kind of... I mean, you can get it out of glass, but I've got some stuff here, but it's big enough for us. If your brother comes in, uh... Yeah, I'd like to see him. I've got several different materials. Okay. This is classified, yeah, more glass, commercial rounds, what's that going for?
Helen?
That's not bad. It isn't going up there.
Could we move everything out now or...
Buses, we have buses tomorrow.
Okay, so maybe we'll keep it the same as the usual and try to get it to...
I'll call this meeting of the Missoula City Council to order and I'd ask that you stand for the presentation of the colors.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Please be seated.
The record will show that all the council members are present except Councilman Reedy and Hermus and Harrison. Are there any changes to the minutes of the last meeting? Now we'll accept those minutes as presented. Go first two items for final consideration. The first two items are from the Plaid Annexation and Zoning Committee. Mr. Sampson?
One moment while I find them. First, a request by Fred Downing, property owner, on behalf of Thomas Stevens, TGS Incorporated, rezoned property located in northwest one quarter of Section 5 Township 13 North Range 19 West PMM Northwest of the intersection of Grant Creek Road and Interstate 90 containing 5.13 acres from C Commercial to C with a CLB overlay. Although a form was not present, the committee recommends the council pass an ordinance to rezone property located in northwest one quarter of Section 5 Township 13 North Range 19 West PMM Northwest of the intersection of Grant Creek Road and Interstate 90 containing 5.13 acres from C Commercial to C with a CLB overlay as requested by Grant Creek Village Incorporated, subject to the following conditions: One, CLB overlay shall only apply to an establishment that has an on-premise consumption of alcoholic beverages in association with a restaurant or motel and which is located within the same building as a restaurant or motel. Two, the area of the CLB overlay shall be applied to the footprint of one building where alcoholic beverage is served and not to the entire site. Three, the maximum floor area ratio of the site shall be 50 percent. Boulevard, number four, the boulevard area between the top of the future curb and the floodplain boundary shall be landscaped with lawn or vegetation ground cover and shall include street trees. Five, areas of the site not improved with buildings landscaping or paving shall be managed at a weed-free condition and Six, the natural creek corridor of Grant Creek shall not be disturbed. Buildings shall be set back from the floodplain boundary a minimum distance of forty feet and I would so move.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Horton?
I've seen the proposed plat of this whole area and unfortunately it's too late, but it makes you wish the whole city was planned out this well. However, I stand in opposition to the CLB overlay. I don't believe we're doing our neighborhoods any good putting a onsite consumption facility and casino at the entrance to the neighborhoods. Again, we had some discussion about this. Sometimes the developers see this as the drunk drivers coming out of the neighborhoods to the bars. I see this as the drunk drivers coming out of the bars going into the neighborhoods and so I'm opposed to the zoning change.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes, I would only point out that we do not control the liquor licenses and if a liquor license moved into this area, why it would mean that another one would have to move out of another area. So the net result from the city would be the same number of liquor licenses.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Craig?
Yes?
Jean Garelli?
Yes?
Harrison? Absent. Horton?
No.
Loughlin?
Yes?
Potts?
Yes.
Rosenleaf?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes?
Motion passes nine zero.
The final item for final consideration is from the Public Works Committee. I'm not sure whether we actually have an action item here. I don't believe that we do.
I think it's a motion.
The final consideration is to consider ordering a grade level railroad crossing at Woody Street or other locations providing access to downtown for north side residents. The committee recommended that the council request the mayor and councilperson Kelly Rosenleaf to set up a scoping meeting to determine the problem and time schedule for a non-motorized access to the north side. The committee also requested that the police department provide extra patrol of the Orange Street underpass by means of bicycle patrol or foot patrol and I would so move.
Discussion. Ms. Rosenleaf.
I would simply comment that we had an initial meeting with the neighborhood association representatives and representatives of the mayor's office and MRA and had a planning meeting and then we met today with some representatives of the railroad and it appears we have some common ground about definition of the problem and we'll work on some solutions.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Horton?
Yes?
Loughlin?
Yes?
Potts?
Yes?
Rosenleaf?
Yes?
Sampson?
Yes?
Shay?
Yes?
Wood?
Yes?
Craig?
Yes?
Jean Garelli?
Yes?
Motion's passed nine zero.
We'll go now to comments from citizens. We give an opportunity at each council meeting for citizens to address the council on any items other than those that are set for a public hearing. So if anyone would like to take that opportunity, now's your chance. I ask you to limit your comments to three minutes and to give us your name and address. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. For the record, my name is Nick Kaufman. I had a unique opportunity to attend all but the last twenty minutes of your marathon meeting last Monday and I'd like to comment on, first of all, Mr. Mayor, the way you ran the meeting, I thought you conducted it very well and secondly, to the council, it seemed through that whole thing, you gave excellent attention to each person who spoke and each item and as a member of this community, I just want to thank you for that attention and for giving your time to the community to make those kind of decisions. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick. Any other comments? If not, we will go to the public hearing. We have a hearing this evening on a proposal to extend the boundaries of the farmer's market to include Railroad Street extending east to Washington Street and south on Patty Street to the alley beside Art Craft Printers. Mr. Loughlin?
Mr. Mayor?
Norm, could you use your microphone?
I'm sorry. No. Um, Mr. Mayor, Mary, and our last name is M-E-I-S-I-N-G-R advised me that many years ago, she was influential in re-changing Railroad Street to the name of it, to Alder Street. I just wanted to make that note for the minute.
Right. Is there a staff report this evening? Do any staff members want to make any observations? If not, then we'll ask for a public comment. Mr. Deemer?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'm Mary Mysinger, 219 East Alder.
Mary, can you pull the microphone down? So, there you go.
I'm Mary Mysinger, 219 East Alder.
Thank you.
Uh, many years ago, from the beginning of Missoula, this was named Railroad Street, an extension of Railroad. Where many, most of us live is really an extension of the West Alder. This is to be designated, is designated as East Alder. It's the east of Higgins Avenue, the second block. And, uh, there were nice railroad people that lived along there, people lived at the railroad, my father did, he was a railroad man for many years there. And then it, as they kind of died and left, there was quite a little, a lot of slumish things come in there, you know, it was kind of went down. And the people that did stay and owned property there, my house is ninety-one years old, it's one of the oldest Missoula there and I'm trying to get it fixed up better to remodeling it now to get it to its old way. And, um, so we didn't like it a lot when the new neighbors came in and re-airs to the railroad, to the old railroad street there, one hundred block and two hundred block in particular. And so, uh, we had this change to East Alder because it gives a little better impression and there's not much left of the railroad and the people aren't working there any longer, the rowhouse was taken out. And we would like to have that designated, changed on there as, as East Alder. This is only a side thing that we noticed because the issue is the farmer's market.
Thank you, Mary. We'll do our best to get a change. Sometimes, once these things get in their computer, they kind of stick there, so bear with us if it shows up again. Thank you. Mr. Deemer?
City Council, Mr. Mayor, I am Eugene Deemer. I am the president of Missoula Farmer's Market Board of Directors. The farmer's market is now in its twenty-first year of operation. It has been successful, if any of you have been down there can tell. Uh, we're growing. You have to consider the farmer's market as a business. It has many departments. The departments, uh, might be there, every market, they might be there three or four out of a, out of an entire season. But it is part of a business. We've grown, we've grown out of our area. Uh, this last week, the Market Master tells us, I think we had eighty-eight sellers. These are separate little departments in this business. We are functioning in the area we're in now. Where are we going to be, say, five years from now? Where are we going to be next August, next September? Very, very crowded. So what we're asking is, we're asking the city to bear with us and grant us permission to utilize additional area on the city streets. What we're asking for is from Patty Street on East Alder Street to Washington. Uh, we don't intend to use this entire street. What we're intending on using would be the north side of East Alder Street, allowing ingress egress for the homeowners that are there. There's four, are eight homes, one apartment building to my knowledge. I've talked to a couple of the residents and they tell me there's about six vehicles are parked there overnight. Uh, another area that we want to use and expand into is, we're asking down to the alley on Patty Street. We really don't want to go down to that alley, but I don't know how to describe it any other way. We really want to go down, maybe take over one driveway into the parking lot behind the Art Craft Printers. Uh, there's two driveways there. This would still allow access into there. Uh, to cooperate with the landowners, the people that have the lawns on the boulevard on the east side of Patty Street, I think we could accommodate them and say, stay away from their boulevards. But, um, we would like, that is a ver, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I want to back up. On, um, Washington Street, really the area we'd like, not in Washington, I'm sorry, on East, um, East Alder, we would like to go down to where there is, um, handicap parking, there's a designated area on the south side of, of Washington, or, um, east...
On Patty?
Patty Street, no, not East Patty, uh, East Alder Street that has a handicap parking area. We'd like to go down to that on the north side. So, uh, that's a large intersection and we could accommodate lots to our expanding business in that area if you would grant us permission. We respectfully request it. Thank you for your concerns.
Mr. Deemer, I think we may have some questions for you. Mr. Wood?
Have you either talked to the police department or the fire department about this request?
I have been at the committee, at the committee hearing originally with the request and I was at the, at a meeting of the department heads, I believe it's a week or two weeks, two, a week or two, or two weeks ago, yes it is. And I outlined what we wanted to do at that time, yes. But specifically to those two departments on a one-to-one basis, no.
Ms. Rosenleaf?
Um, I went around that neighborhood and brought a little notice, although it said Railroad Street on it, um, so that the neighbors would know that this was pending and, um, there's some concern about, uh, being able to get in and out with their cars and as a market goer myself, I'm wondering how that's going to work with the hordes of market shoppers, how you would barricade that off so that people could in fact come and go with their vehicles?
We have not given this a, a detailed study. Uh, I happen to be a retired highway engineer. I've been in the business for twenty-some, twenty-six years. Um, my, my thinking on this would be that we would barricade, uh, we would probably barricade Washington, or at the intersection of Washington and East Alder. And we would have our merchants sitting on the north side of the street. If someone, a homeowner or, uh, one of the residents in the apartment house wanted to come in, that they could, we would provide access, say, around a barricade to come in, say, for those individuals, but it would not be open, say, for the general buying public. Uh, that is my initial thought on it.
Mr. Horton?
If this should not go through, uh, given the fact that people don't always get everything they want, has any consideration been given to doing a juring process or an alternating weekend process for allocation of the spots?
No, and I'll tell you why. Twenty-one years ago, this was started by Mavis McKelvey and Chinwan Reinhardt. The intent was to be that this market was to be a backyard farmer's market, that anyone that had excess produce that they were raising in their little gardens, that they would have a opportunity, say, to merchandise it. This intent has not changed. We know that we cannot keep a viable farmer's market going with this type of a farmer. We need to have anchors like Amorall does. We have some of those anchors. We've got Morrison's out of Hugheson, we have Benson out down here on Seventh Avenue. I would like to consider myself as a, one of the major vendors and there's one or two others that are probably rather sized, good-sized vendors. You have to have those as the draw. The other people that come in with the raspberries, the strawberries, they're there what, two, three, four weeks and they're done. The same with the people that have the lettuce and the radishes and whatever. Uh, but you've got a shifting, you have a shifting clientele, or a shifting bunch of merchants, uh, there, so, but you still have, the major people are there every single week. We have designated, in our market, we've designated ninety-one six-foot spots for merchants that are going to be there either every Saturday, every Tuesday, or both. Out of the ninety-one spots, uh, eighty-nine are claimed, that say they will be there. Uh, as an example, we take four. Another merchant takes five, but they're there, every single market. So they are the draw. But the, the other people, they fill in on a part-time basis, which makes it what it is. We don't want to become elitist and as soon as we get into the juring system, we become elitist and we don't want to be that.
Any other questions? Mr. Sampson?
How many spots do you have available?
We have ninety-one reserved spots available. We have, uh, I can't tell you a number of feet, how many other spots would be available. We have the complete, um, north side of, um, Alder Street which is available. We have all the yellow curbs on the south side of Alder Street, uh, that, that were used in the block, in the Cordenoff area.
But if you have eighty-nine that are always taken, that you have pre-sold, how many available non-pre-sold do you have?
I don't know because we don't measure those because those, you can rent any amount of space you want, anywhere from three feet up to ten.
On, on a good, good night or afternoon, then how many vendors do you have?
Probably, um, well, less, the last Saturday, I believe we had eighty-eight, eighty-eight vendors.
Yeah.
And that's, that's not counting, that's not reserved spots, that's vendors, that's people, I count as one.
And you don't know how many spaces those ladies use?
No, I don't, I do not.
Any other questions for Mr. Deemer? Mrs. Jean Garelli?
Mr. Deemer, um, when this goes back to, um, committee, do you think that when you come back to committee this week, you could have some of that information from police and fire, just so that when we make our decision, we will have that? That would be helpful.
I, I'm not sure, I know what, what information you're asking for.
Well, um, what Mr. Wood was referring to in terms of safety issues, accessibility for police and fire?
I, 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 I'm not sure I can. I, I'm a, I'm a farmer. I, I, you know, growing things don't wait for man or beast.
Okay, I guess we can request...
I think what we can do is to ask that, uh, the two departments be present. We can do that.
Right, that's what I meant.
Mrs. Craig?
I was going to say...
Mrs. Shay?
Mr. Deemer, it, it's, it seems like you're quite crowded down there. I'm at the market just about every week and I don't see any available space anywhere. If you've got like eighty-eight compared to ninety-one or something, you don't have much extra space, do you?
Yes, there is, there is space. We have never turned a, a person away yet and we don't really intend to. We might have to crowd a little bit, but, uh, it would be awful nice if we have just a little more room to expand out.
Thank you.
Ms. Rosenleaf?
Mr. Deemer, have you considered any other options, like have you considered, um, going down in front of, say, the old Missoulian building on the sidewalk or any non-street closing options? Or going perhaps all the way down Patty?
No, no, we have, we have not. And one of the main reasons is that the, the MRA has been, been very kind to us and designed, uh, this area with us in mind and we are really, really happy there, uh, with this, with the area we've got and we...
Oh, I don't mean moving from the area you have, I meant, you're...
Additional area on the city streets. What we're asking for is from Patty Street on East Alder Street to Washington. We don't intend to use this entire street. What we're intending on using would be the north side of East Alder Street. Allowing ingress egress for the homeowners that are there, there's four or eight homes, one apartment building to my knowledge. I've talked to a couple of the residents and they tell me there's about six vehicles are parked there overnight. Another area that we want to use and expand into is we're asking down to the alley on Patty Street. We really don't want to go down to that alley, but I don't know how to describe it any other way. We really want to go down, maybe take over one driveway into the parking lot behind the Art Craft Printers. There's two driveways there. This would still allow access into there. To cooperate with the landowners, the people that have the lawns on the boulevard on the east side of Patty Street, I think we could accommodate them and say stay away from their boulevards. But we would like, that is a ver- oh, I'm sorry, I want to back up. On Washington Street, really the area we'd like, not in Washington, I'm sorry, on East Alder, we would like to go down to where there is handicap parking, there's a designated area on the south side of Washington or on east-
On Patty?
Patty Street, no, not East Patty, yeah, East Alder Street that has a handicap parking area. We'd like to go down to that on the north side. So that's a large intersection and we could accommodate lots to our expanding business in that area if you would grant us permission. We respectfully request it. Thank you for your concerns.
Mr. Deemer, I think we may have some questions for you. Mr. Wood?
Have you either talked to the police department or the fire department about this request?
I have been at the committee, at the committee hearing originally with the request and I was at the, at a meeting of the department heads, I believe it's a week or two weeks, two, a week or two, or two weeks ago, yes it is. And I outlined what we wanted to do at that time, yes. But specifically to those two departments on a one-to-one basis, no.
Ms. Rosenleaf?
I went around that neighborhood and brought a little notice although it said Railroad Street on it so that the neighbors would know that this was pending and there's some concern about being able to get in and out with their cars and as a market goer myself, I'm wondering how that's going to work with the hordes of market shoppers, how you would barricade that off so that people could in fact come and go with their vehicles?
We have not given this a detailed study. I happen to be a retired highway engineer. I've been in the business for twenty-some, twenty-six years. My, my thinking on this would be that we would barricade, we would probably barricade Washington, or at the intersection of Washington and East Alder. And we would have our merchants sitting on the north side of the street. If someone, a homeowner or one of the residents in the apartment house wanted to come in, that they could, we would provide access, say around a barricade to come in, say for those individuals, but it would not be open, say for the general buying public. That is my initial thought on it.
Mr. Horton?
If this should not go through, given the fact that people don't always get everything they want, has any consideration been given to doing a juring process or an alternating weekend process for allocation of the spots?
No, and I'll tell you why. Twenty-one years ago, this was started by Mavis McKelvey and Chinwan Reinhardt. The intent was to be that this market was to be a backyard farmer's market, that anyone that had excess produce that they were raising in their little gardens, that they would have a opportunity, say, to merchandise it. This intent has not changed. We know that we cannot keep a viable farmer's market going with this type of a farmer. We need to have anchors like Amorall does. We have some of those anchors. We've got Morrison's out of Hugheson, we have Benson out down here on Seventh Avenue. I would like to consider myself as a, one of the major vendors and there's one or two others that are probably rather size, good-sized vendors. You have to have those as the draw. The other people that come in with the raspberries, the strawberries, they're there what, two, three, four weeks and they're done. The same with the people that have the lettuce and the radishes and whatever. But you've got a shifting, you have a shifting clientele, or a shifting bunch of merchants there, so, but you still have, the major people are there every single week. We have designated, in our market, we've designated ninety-one six-foot spots for merchants that are going to be there either every Saturday, every Tuesday, or both. Out of the ninety-one spots, eighty-nine are claimed that say they will be there. As an example, we take four, another merchant takes five, but they're there every single market. So they are the draw. But the other people, they fill in on a part-time basis, which makes it what it is. We don't want to become elitist. And as soon as we get into the juring system, we become elitist and we don't want to be that.
Any other questions? Mr. Sampson?
How many spots do you have available?
We have ninety-one reserved spots available. We have, I can't tell you a number of feet, how many other spots would be available, but we have the complete north side of Alder Street which is available. We have all the yellow curbs on the south side of Alder Street that, that were used in the block, in the Cordenoff area.
But if you have eighty-nine that are always taken, that you have pre-sold, how many available non-pre-sold do you have?
I don't know because we don't measure those because those, you can rent any amount of space you want, anywhere from three feet up to ten.
On, on a good, good night or afternoon, then how many vendors do you have?
Probably, well, last, last Saturday, I believe we had eighty-eight, eighty-eight vendors.
Yeah.
And that's, that's not counting, that's not reserved spots, that's vendors, that's people, I count as one.
And you don't know how many spaces those lady vendors-
No, I don't, I do not. Uh-uh.
Any other questions for Mr. Deemer? Mrs. Gengerelli?
Mr. Deemer, when this goes back to committee, do you think that when you come back to committee this week, you could have some of that information from police and fire just so that when we make our decision, we will have that? That would be helpful.
I, I'm not sure I know what, what information you're asking for.
Well, what Mr. Wood was referring to in terms of safety issues, accessibility for police and fire?
I, 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 I'm not sure I can. I, I'm a, I'm a farmer. I, I, you know, growing things don't wait for man or beast.
Okay, I guess we can request-
I think what we can do is to ask that the two departments be present. We can do that.
Right, that's what I mean.
Mrs. Craig.
I was going to say-
Mrs. Shea.
Mr. Deemer, it, it's, it seems like you're quite crowded down there. I'm at the market just about every week and I don't see any available space anywhere. If you've got like eighty-eight compared to ninety-one or something, you don't have much extra space, do you?
Yes, there is, there is space. We have never turned a, a person away yet and we don't really intend to. We might have to crowd a little bit, but it would be awful nice if we'd have just a little more room to expand out.
Thank you.
Ms. Rosenleaf?
Mr. Deemer, have you considered any other options, like have you considered going down in front of, say, the old Missoulian building on the sidewalk or any non-street-closing options? Or going perhaps all the way down Patty?
No, no, we have, we have not. And one of the main reasons is that the, the MRA has been, been very kind to us and designed this area with us in mind and we are really, really happy there with this, with the area we've got and-
Oh, I don't mean moving from the area you have, I meant your expansion.
Well, we don't really want to get out on a live street. We'd rather be on, on a, on a street that does not have live traffic.
Even on a wide sidewalk like the Higgins sidewalk in front of the old Missoulian building in United Way?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think so. It, it, it has never come up for consideration to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Deemer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any other testimony? Yes. The woman in the red shirt.
My name's Kathy Coed, I'm a resident on Alder Street.
I, I think I'll ask you to speak just a little louder, I don't, we didn't get your name.
Okay, Kathy Coed, a resident on Alder Street.
Thank you.
We are in objection, quite a few residents there as it is now. He stated he has ninety-one spots, there's one little garbage can, the garbage spews out, there's broken glass there now. The street people go quite fast and there's a lot of traffic traveling up and down East Alder Street. It's kind of hard to say what, you know, you shouldn't close that one with that many people going up and down. Also, the alley is very inaccessible most of the time. There's quite a few extra parking of the residents in the alley, so we've had several incidents that you can't get up and down the alley there. Our main objection is expanding, I guess would cause a lot of problems for the residents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
Yes, my name is Bob Jones and I live with my wife Hazel Foley at 532 North Patty, which is the corner of this intersection, so consequently we'll be affected on both streets. We first learned of this, we returned from Canada this week and read the notice, it was very vague as to what the intention is. And after talking with Gene earlier today and somewhat, my wife talked to him Saturday, discovered that they wanted to use even the boulevards. Well, Gene said they would drop that from their cost and try to use the west side of Patty Street and the north side of Alder Railroad, whatever we're going to call it. But we feel that the market should be contained in the area in which it is serving. To move into the residential area, I think is growing beyond its purpose. It's taking on a life of its own. It may be twenty-one years old. Our home is about a hundred years old. The house three doors down was where my father was born eighty-two years ago, so we have a little time, I think, on the market as far as the neighborhood goes. Say, we're privileged to be a part of the market and want it to stay where it is. We like it, we think it adds to the city, it adds to the culture of the area, but to grow to where we're denied access or use of our property, it, Mr. Deemer did say that we would be allowed, allowed to use our property. I think there's another piece of paper called the Constitution that gives us guaranteed of that, rather than allowing us to use it. We get a lot of litter as the last person just testified. We don't mind picking up, takes a half hour after market maybe. During the busy season, that garbage can does get overflowing, the dogs scattered around. It's not a good situation and to double the size of the market, I think, is, is ill-advised. I don't believe all of the alternatives have been investigated. I think some of the council members have indicated that. And I think even looking at the north portion of the city parking lot, there are a hundred and eighty-nine feet there. This is immediately across the sidewalk from Alder Street on what they're now located. If that were divided into six-foot parcels such as Gene indicates they use, that would add another thirty-one spaces immediately and that could be serviced either from the parking lot or from the sidewalk itself without growing into the residential area. So I would like the council to consider rejecting this request and looking at other alternatives if indeed the market needs to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, my name is Janice Cam and I live at 215 East Alder. I've lived there thirty-eight years, my, all my life, and I liked the farmer's market when I was younger, when it first started out, but it's just grown too big and there's too many people coming. There's garbage all over the lawns, they park up on the lawns about a foot or so, no respect, they bring their dogs, tie them up and leave their bikes on the lawn and their dogs barking. It bothers our dogs, makes them upset. We can't sleep in or anything, after eight o'clock, forget it, there are people already lined up ready to come. And as far as watering, people get mad when I water, you know, because they get wet or they leave their cars, so then I feel weird, you know, watering. And, you know, there's just no organized parking, they'll park this way, parallel parking wherever they want to park in there. They park in the alley, come between the houses and then it really upsets the dogs and, you know, I just don't think it's a really good idea. I think it's growing way too much for the area it's in and I think it should stay the size it is or accommodate some other way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testimony? Yes, sir?
I'm Randy Coed and I live at 233 East Alder and I got, like everybody else, same thing, there's more problems to this farmer's market than what they really looked into, like we really live there and we have, like people say that of the, oh, as expanding and stuff, we won't have the same kind of fire protection or nine-one-one access because the streets are blocked off and all the homes are older and there's a lot more problems at this farmer's market than is what's being said. I think the council should look into it before they expand it, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. Any other testimony? Yes?
Mr. Mayor and City Council? My name's Bob Martin, Box forty-three of Lolo, and I'm here to ask you to help me save my truck farming business from the expansion, keep it from terminating of the farmer's market. Instead, I'd like to grow and expand with the community and the farmer's market. Please let me explain my position with the farmer's market before we go on here. I grew up in eastern Montana, I'm a veteran of two Vietnam tours and I graduated from the University of Montana. I need to tell you this because I am a native Montanan. I've been a member of the farmer's market since nineteen seventy-nine and I'm a member today. I need to be able to sell my stuff outside the farmer's market five to six weeks because I go to Washington and get fresh fruit. They won't let me in. My business employs about four people right now at ten bucks an hour and we need to have about ten people by the end of this year. And I might add to the farmer's market board that they usually spend their wages at the farmer's market. Bitterroot Harvest started by selling or buying apples and strawberries from the farmers down in the bitter root. And then we went to the flathead cherries and we brought them to the farmer's market because the farmers didn't have time and the customers didn't have time to go get them. Then the cherries froze out and we had a big loss. So we filled that loss with fresh peaches, apricots, plums, and we needed an outlet for all this and we went outside the boundaries of the farmer's market. Bitterroot Harvest is inspected by the Montana State Department of Agriculture. We have an itinerant merchant's license from the state of Montana, we're bonded. We have a city business license, we have a vendor's permit, I don't even know if that's still needed now. I sold my farm, I bought a large truck and trailer for this business. Bitterroot Harvest meets with the Farmers Friday, our load is still in the field and we pick it up and it's gone by Saturday night, so it's fresh, it's buying right, contains all the vitamins it's supposed to, and it still has all the fruit sugars that make it taste like fruit and we sell it all by Saturday night. And Bitterroot Harvest involvement with the community of Missoula is growing and we'd like to grow along with the farmer's market and the community of Missoula. The previous years, Bitterroot Harvest has donated to the Food Bank and the Pavarello Center. This year, we find other needy areas in the youth home in Sealy Lake and the family assistance program here in Missoula and we've already been contacted by them and we're trying to work with them into our busy schedules right now and we will. Bitterroot Harvest's commitment to the farmer's market is to increase the variety of fresh nutritious fruits so the customer will eventually buy all their fresh produce at the farmer's market. We do not compete with any growers and if there is a problem, we don't sell our stuff until the other growers are completely sold out. We advertise in the Missoulian, the Messenger, we've had people come from Dillon, Butte, Helena, Canada, all looking for our advertised specials. The problem that I hear from the farmer's market board is that if we let one in, we have to let them all in and what I'm guessing it is, is out-of-state growers. But the farmers do not have time to come and sell and once they realize that it's only for two hours, they're never back again, so this is not a problem. And now the expansion will put all accessible areas under the control of the farmer's market board and they won't be able to get in at all. So my request to you, Mr. Mayor, and to the City Council is to please approve the expansion. It's a community thing, it's good, but please leave me just one space outside the farmer's market so that I can sell for five to six weeks and the rest of the time, it's all local produce and I can get in the farmer's market. Without the farmer's market, Bitterroot Harvest, my business cannot guarantee a sellout and our load will be lost and we won't be able to continue. My last comment deals with coffee machines inside the farmer's market. These coffee machines make everything from espresso, muco, to cappuccino with whipped cream on top. Where'd these beans come from? What did any of the ingredients come from? Certainly not anywhere in Montana. So before you make your decision, and I've already heard from a lot of you and I think I recognize a lot of you, please come and see my operation and you decide with your own eyes, better you have your taste buds, if Bitterroot Harvest has a place here in the community. With the freeze in Missoula this past month, we may not have any local food at all. So thank you, God bless you, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Mr. Horton?
I'm not sure, but are you the guys that were marketing the organic produce? Are you the guys that are selling the pesticide-contaminated stuff?
We try, we try to get as much organic stuff as we possibly can. The only problem with, and that organics is the future, that's the only way to go. But organics is so hard to get right now that we will go organics first, but we get whatever is available. So right now, I'd have to answer that by saying it is mostly not organic, but we wish we could go organic because that is the future.
Mrs. Shea?
I just didn't quite understand. You said that, that you're not allowed to sell within the confines of the limits of the farmer's market?
Whenever I have out-of-western Montana produce.
I see. Now, did you bring that cantaloupe? Were you, yeah, that wasn't-
Our last load, we had asparagus and our next load-
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Good, well, I hope you continue there because I've really enjoyed that fruit. Thanks.
Great.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there any other testimony?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, Mary Misings, I mentioned before, there's one thing that you're going to have to, probably nobody's thought about. We have this worst street in Missoula, we can't get it paved, but we're mostly retired people there now and it's going to be hard to get it paved, but the wreath road's in bad shape. There's going to have to be something done with those roads if they move down there because there's great deep holes in there, so, and that's, I guess, a city street. Somebody's going to fall, break a leg or injure themselves very badly and you're going to be in a mess with that, so that's another thing to take in consideration. We get little, we get these puddles filled, filled up every year a little bit and then it's down again the spring. This year, there's some off ones, you can hardly drive down that street and the place is out zigzagging.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other testimony? Ms. Rosenleaf?
Just briefly, Mrs. Rainey Pappas was not able to be here this evening. She called and indicated she was concerned about the expansion due to her ability to get in and out. And I also spoke with the representative from Art Craft Printing, they said it would not affect their operations because the market operates at a time when they are not open, so it was not a problem for them.
Thank you. Any other testimony? If not, then we'll close the public hearing. I'd like to thank all of you for participating. We'll go on to the next item of business, which is communications from the mayor. I'd like to speak just briefly about public hearings. Last week, we had a session that all of us will long remember, at least that part of it that we're able to remember. It was a trying situation for all concerned and I felt especially badly for citizens who had come here and did not get a chance to testify, as well as for those who came here and had to wait until after midnight for a chance to testify. I know that there has been some concern, especially from folks on the north side, that we cut off the testimony after eleven o'clock and I do feel badly that there were people who because of that didn't get a chance to testify, although we did hold the hearing open until later and, and did have some testimony after that. It was a, a, an unfortunate situation all the way around, but I did feel strongly that it was important to try to share the time that we had available and not let it all be dominated by one neighborhood. So I think that we can assure everyone that both the executive branch and the city council will be looking at that situation and trying to see what we can learn from it. It may be part of what we have to learn is that, that it just may not be possible for us to have unlimited length of time for hearings and that when we know that we're going to have more than a limited number of hearings, that we're just going to have to set a time limit on it and only give the opponents and proponents so much time. But in any event, I just wanted to say that I am sorry that things piled up as they did and that some people didn't get as much chance to speak as they might have liked to. I would like an opportunity tonight to present to the council the executive budget. I think that you all have budget books in front of you. I welcome your study of them and I'm sure that you will give it all of that and then some. I look forward to working with the council over the next several weeks and going through the budget, working with you and preparing a final budget for adoption, hopefully on the third of August. I'd just like to speak to you briefly about the budget that's been presented to you, although I certainly encourage you at your earliest opportunity to read both the Budget Transmittal Letter, which is about five pages long, and then the Budget Highlights, which Chuck Sterns and Dennis Taylor and Ron Vought worked on together. And those should be a pretty good introduction to the budget. This budget does not contemplate any increase in tax rates. It does anticipate that there will be some growth in tax revenue. We, we're projecting a six percent increase in the property tax base. The, we're also anticipating growth in other revenue categories, almost all of it, a result of, of growth in the Missoula area, either growth in fees, especially in building fees or in gambling-generated revenue. The total general fund budget has increased to fourteen million, eight-hundred-seventy-four thousand dollars. That represents all told about an eleven percent increase over the last fiscal year. A substantial amount of that increase is attributed to one-time expenditures. We have recommended spending down the ending fund balance to about one-point-five million dollars. That's higher than where we had recommended spending it down to last year. It's still in excess of a ten percent ending fund balance as a percentage of the total general fund budget, which by any measure is a very substantial ending fund balance. We have recommended some uses of the cash balance that sometimes have not been recommended in the past. We do, we have recommended increasing the contingency amount back up to a hundred thousand dollars, which is where it had been for some time. We've also recommended increasing the termination account up to a hundred thousand dollars. Those two by themselves, obviously, those two increases amount to a, a total increase of a hundred thousand dollars. We have also recommended a substantial use of ending fund cash balance for SID, for paying off the delinquent SIDs. So I would ask that you take careful account of those very substantial one-time expenditures as you think about the eleven percent increase. That if you look department by department, you will see that, that by and large, that the departmental increases are far below that. And if you take out the one-time expenditures, then that, that percentage comes way down. The budget was built with substantial reliance upon the strategic plan. It's important to us that the council understand that in part because I think it will help in our dealings with, with department heads as we- in our dealings with, with department heads as we go through consideration of the budget. We spent a lot of time, as we've told you last fall, within the executive branch deciding what were our highest priorities. And once we had identified those, we agreed within the executive branch that we would present a budget that reflected those priorities. And we believe that we have done that faithfully. Part of what that means within the executive branch is that, well, there are certainly areas where departments have wanted more of an increase in spending than I have been able to recommend, that I think that we have very strong support throughout the departments for those increases that we have recommended because in every case, those increases were identified in the strategic planning process. Let me just give you one example of that. We have recommended within the finance budget, spending money both on a consultant and on a full-time position for a management information system, for a system of coordinating computer use throughout City Hall. This is something that every time we've done strategic planning, the department heads have, have been very forceful in saying that we need to do this. We turned back to them and said, "Well, if we do it, we're going to have to hire somebody to run it. Are you willing to give up an expansion in your own department in order to accomplish this?" And the answer of the department heads was yes. And so we did, and you will see that in the budget. But above all, what I think you'll see in the budget is a response to that element in the strategic plan that comes forth time and time again, and that is that Missoula is in a period of growth and change and that city government has a responsibility to guide and manage that change as well as it can. And so you will see that reflected both in the growth in revenues that, that are projected here, but also in the, in the modest growth in personnel throughout the budget. The largest single personnel increase that's recommended here is an increase of three new firefighters as of January 1st of 1993. Those of you who have been following the budgets for a while will remember that we made a decision two or three years ago that we needed to add an engine company to our emergency response force. And we began at the time of, of the major annexations by adding five firefighters. With the addition of three more firefighters, we are halfway to the point of, of completing the development of a new engine company. We need a new engine company regardless of whether or not a new fire station is built, but of course, without a new fire station, housing a new engine company will be a cramped matter to say the least, but those, those discussions will proceed into the fall. But this is a recommendation then to go, to move essentially halfway through the development of a new engine company. Another, and, and obviously this is related to growth and change in Missoula. The strain on the, on the firefighting force right now, the, the number of, of times that we have calls in two directions at once and, and not enough planned for manpower to, to cover them is, is getting to be more and more of a problem. So this is a response to, to growth in the Missoula area and it's one that we need to follow through on. We are trying to time the addition of new firefighters in a way that, that corresponds to the reduction in our responsibility for the sewers in southwest Missoula. With the rebate obligations that we took on there, we've had several hundred thousand dollars for each of the last several budgets, ending with this budget. And it's important that we try to time our, our new expenditures so that they come online as those expenditures decline, and so that's part of our strategy here. Another area where growth and change in the Missoula community is being responded to is a recommendation that we go forward with the DARE program in the police department. What that means is that in order to assign a police officer to the DARE program, we have to be able to hire one new patrol officer, and so we're making that recommendation in this budget. Growth and change is also reflected in the recommendation that we hire a new traffic engineer. In this case, this is not a recommendation out of the general fund, but out of the new federal funds that are available, although there will be a one-time need to use cash funds, or cash, general fund cash for this because of a lag in the anticipated receipt of, of federal funds. We can only receive the federal funds after we've expended them, so we have to budget for a quarter of that out of the, out of the cash balance. I've also recommended using some of the new federal transportation funds to maintain the bicycle coordinator position at full-time. We have never, at least in my recollection, budgeted that as full-time out of general fund budget. Last year we were able to make it a full-time position because, while we had only budgeted it at three-quarters time out of the general fund, we had grant funds that could make up the other quarter. In this case, because by, planning for bicycles is such an important part of our response to the federal legislation, I think that it's appropriate that we should use some part of that money to maintain that position at full-time. The one area that, that this budget as presented does not on its face reflect some of the, the priorities in the strategic plan is in the, in the Office of Community Development. And here I would ask people to be patient and understand what the process is. Because the Office of Community Development is a joint office, and because the Office of Community Development had not, at the time that we had to prepare our budget, had not presented the county with their enhancement requests, we did not feel that it was proper to get ahead of them and recommend expansion. There are some areas where I believe that expansion should be seriously considered, especially in the area of resource protection, trails planning, and open space planning. And as the county goes forward with its budgeting process, we will be working very closely with them in, in trying to coordinate our budgets so that, so that if at all possible, we can enhance our ability in that regard. One area where we, we are cooperating very closely with the county and with private utilities is in going forward with the development of a GIS, a geographic information systems plan for Missoula. This is very important. I think that it's generally conceded throughout the development community that it's time that we got on with this. We're recommending doing that in two ways. First of all, expending $28,000 on the base mapping that is all already underway, and secondly, setting aside $40,000, hopefully to be matched by the county, for acquiring consulting services to enable us to put together a GIS system. I've already mentioned the MIS system. One feature of this budget that is unusual is that with the cooperation of the city council, we have been able to assure city employees already of a modest but well-deserved increase in their base pay, and we appreciate your cooperation in that regard. And the employees have, have been outspoken in their appreciation also of knowing that there not going to be a political football during the, the budget process. It's not every year that we would be able to do that, but this year I think that we all felt that, that it was well-deserved and, and that it was a decision that should be made early. As a result of that decision, the base increase will be able to be reflected from the beginning of the fiscal year rather than having to have a retroactive payment. Finally, if I just skip over some of the items that you can read in the transmittal letter. In keeping with the identification of the importance of long-range strategic planning and of, of doing that on a community-wide level, we have recommended that the Missoula Vision 2020 process be carried forward into the next year, which is what we had informed the council when we first recommended that, that it would be. We have recommended setting aside $20,000 for that purpose and, and we would strongly urge you to maintain that commitment to community-wide planning, which I think is being well-received throughout the community. One of the reasons that we encouraged the Missoula Vision 2020 process to hold their first public meeting at this time of the year, which is not the ideal time of the year to do it, was because we wanted to make sure that if there were any strong messages from that proceeding, that they would be before us in time to have an influence on the budget. And so we do hope that the council will actively participate in that process this Saturday, Sentinel High School, 9 till 3, and that, that we all then compare notes about what we've heard there and ask ourselves whether there are ways in which the budget should be adjusted to reflect the, the priorities that begin to emerge there. It's not until this time next year that we expect to have a clear statement of priorities, but we did want to have the ability to respond to that work in this budget. So with that, I put the budget before you. I want to thank the, all of the people who helped me in putting it together, both the department and division heads and their staffs as well, who have been, I think, more involved than usual in the, in the preparation of this budget. Ron Vought, Chuck Sterns, and Dennis Taylor have been a wonderful team to work with, and I think that you will see a professionally-prepared budget here. And once again, I genuinely look forward to working with you on it as we turn it over to you, the policymakers, to determine the final shape of the budget. We'll turn now to the consent agenda. Chuck?
There are 11 items on the consent agenda this evening. The first is to approve a $1,212 contract for a regional economy intern in the mayor's office and authorize all necessary signatures. Second is to set a public hearing for June 15th on the five-year capital improvement program and the $21,925,058 FY93 capital budget. Third is to confirm firefighter Gary Honold. Fourth, lift ceiling of $10,000 to $20,000 for MRA code compliance program criteria for former Music Center building located at 403 North Higgins Avenue. Fifth, to accept access easement from Brad and Carla Luck of the Rattlesnake area and that the city grant a private sewer easement to Brad and Carla Luck, subject to approval by the United States Forest Service as required. Sixth, authorize mayor to sign amendment number two for professional engineering services for the Northwest Broadway Sewer Special Improvement District, number 501, with Sorensen and Company Incorporated to perform construction engineering services for the amount of $74,244. Seventh, to authorize the mayor to sign the license agreements and to accept the sanitary sewer easements for the Reserve Street Sanitary Sewer Interceptor, project number 91-001. Eighth, to accept waterline easement across vacated Chestnut Street adjacent to block 48, Knowles Edition. Ninth, accept sanitary sewer easement for Reserve Street Lift Station Generator from County of Missoula and authorize mayor to sign such easement for acceptance with conditions. Ten, authorize mayor to sign construction agreement with the State of Montana Department of Transportation for the Reserve Street construction from US 93 to 3rd Street and authorize the mayor to sign the Reserve Street construction plans. Eleventh, deny the request by A.W. Wilcox and John R. Daly Incorporated to contract for municipal city sewer with no annexation requirements.
Are there any items that anyone would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Jim?
Just for the record on the Brad Luck and Carla Luck item, that is a license agreement now. If you notice in your packet, that's the title on that document.
Mr. Horton?
As a courtesy to Gary Honold, as we normally do, I'd like to vote on this issue separate and not lump him in with a bunch of city business.
Well, actually, we often do vote on it lumped together, but I, but as a courtesy, I was going to ask Chief Gibson if he would care to introduce our prospective new firefighter.
Yes, Chuck Gibson, Fire Chief, City of Missoula, have Gary Honold, firefighter Gary Honold here, who successfully completed his six-month trainee period and his six-month probationary period with satisfactory evaluations and the recommendation of his battalion chief Fritz Wilson and Assistant Chief Marshal Kyle. I'd like to introduce Gary Honold to stand up, please.
Thank you, Gary. Curtis, would you in fact like to have it removed? If it is, we'll take it to the regular agenda, it may be quicker to deal with it here, but if we can do it that way if you'd like.
I'd prefer to vote on it. I mean, this is one-time thing for him, it's business as usual for us, but...
All right. We'll thank you, Gary, and we'll get back to you a little bit later then, okay? Stick around. With that item removed, are there any other items that anyone wants to have removed from the consent agenda? If not, we'll take the roll call on the consent agenda.
Okay, on 10 items, Loughlin, Potts, Rosenleaf, Sampson, Shea, Wood, Craig, Gingarelli, Horton. Consent agenda passes 9-0.
Go on to committee reports, the Finance and License Committee. Mr. Sampson.
I would ask that Public Safety be moved to the head of the agenda on, on the committee report.
Without objection, we'll move Public Safety Committee report to the head of the agenda. Mrs. Shea.
Yes, we have one action item, the confirmation of firefighter Gary Honold. The committee recommends that the council confirm firefighter Gary Honold, and I would so move. I would also like to state that there was some question last week at the committee that attests, an exam that Gary had to pass in order to have an extra certification in order to come to this confirmation. He did take it and he did pass it, and so we, we're very pleased to confirm firefighter Honold.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Congratulations, Gary. Thank you for being here this evening. Now we'll go on to the Finance and License Committee. Mr. Sampson.
First item on the agenda is funding request for technical assistance to joint development fund borrowers. The committee recommends the council approve spending the fiscal year '92 $10,000 general fund economic development appropriation as follows. MCBI, WEDCO, $5,000, MEDC, $4,000, Missoula Cultural Exchange, $1,000, and I would so move.
Is there any discussion? It's been suggested to me that if in fact the council continues to appropriate money for economic development, that we probably should consider changing the process by which access to those funds occurs. I think that that's a good idea. I think that we probably need more public notification of, of that and somewhat more standardized process by which it's done. We've consistently encouraged those that we thought would apply to come in before the end of the fiscal year. This is actually more before the end of the fiscal year than we've usually accomplished it, so that's better than it might be. I am concerned about the level of support for the Economic Development Corporation. I, I realize that because we have cut back in the total appropriation for economic development, that it makes it more difficult for the city to participate at the level that any of us might like to. I think it's clear from the activities of the Economic Development Corporation that the city is being seen as an important and necessary player on the economic development team in Missoula. And yet, partly because of, of the uncertain nature of, of the city's involvement in MEDC, it sometimes lends itself to criticism of the city government that, that I think can be unfair criticism and, and yet it's, it's harmful criticism. The county has established a way of, of appropriating a fairly steady amount and reliable amount of, of money that goes to MEDC. MEDC is therefore able to rely upon it in their budgeting year after year. I would like to suggest to the council that, that we consider go, moving in the direction of essentially a, a membership in MEDC and try to establish that at a level that, that we think would be fair and sustainable. What I would recommend that we consider is something in the neighborhood of $7,500. And that, that's based in part on, on what I see of the MEDC budget and of what our past -- and that's based in part on what I see of the MEDC budget and of what our past performance has been. If this motion were to pass, I would ask for consideration, and if the council does go ahead, as they did last year, and accept the recommendation of appropriating $10,000 for economic development, then I would ask that we consider combining the appropriation that you passed tonight with essentially like amount early in the fiscal year next year, and then try to establish that combined amount as an ongoing membership in the MEDC. This is something that we can return to, but I felt that it was important that we at least get the discussion underway this evening, try to normalize our relations there in large part so that MEDC is able a little bit more effectively to plan. And the same may well be true of other organizations as well. If it is, then I think that we need to get that ironed out before we adopt the economic development budget. So I would just encourage us to give a little bit more thought to the economic development budget as we adopt it this year, give all of the organizations a chance to make their case early on before we put the budget in place. Mr. Horton?
Mr. Mayor, I was the committee member at this particular meeting, and it was my suggestion that we allocate this 541, WEDCO, MEDC, and Missoula Cultural Exchange. WEDCO had requested $6,000, MEDC 5, Missoula Cultural Exchange 1, and we only had $10,000 to spend, so we allocated it thus and spread the shortage around.
Right. And I'm not complaining about the committee recommendation here. I'm just suggesting that as we go into the next year, we just may think about trying to streamline our procedures a little bit. Mr. Sampson?
I was only going to say that I don't think anybody at the committee meeting had any strong feelings on what the particular separation was on this, and this is what came out. The other thing I would point out, though, is that I think the monies that the county gives is also now under where we've annexed and so on and so forth, the value of the mill, probably about half of it comes from us anyhow, so we are not being as miserly as it might appear.
Right, and I think that part of the case that we need to make is precisely to talk about how many mills each government is contributing, and that's part of how I think we should think about where we set our contribution. Ms. Rosenleaf?
Not having had the luxury of looking through next year's budget proposal yet, I'm wondering if you made a different kind of recommendation moving towards a membership for next year?
I have in the narrative suggested that, but the line item itself is not any different than it has been in the past. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
I would like to register a pass.
Next, the committee recommends the council approve claims totaling $103,942.72, and I would so move.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Next is the Platt Annexation and Zoning Committee, Mr. Sampson.
I think all of the items are covered under...
We've got a couple of resolutions listed on the agenda.
Al, there's one on the front page on Carline Edition.
Oh, okay. Although a quorum is not present, the committee recommends the council pass a resolution of intention to annex extending the corporate limits of the city of Missoula a certain tract of land which is wholly surrounded by the city and describe the boundaries thereof as lots 12 through 14 block S. Carline Edition number three, and I would so move. This is some property behind Ernst Store that in past years has sold fireworks. It's been completely surrounded, has been paying city taxes for some years, and it's kind of a cleanup matter.
Discussion. Roll call. Just a moment, is there any public comment? If not, please call the roll.
Potts, Rosenleaf, Sampson, Shea, Wood, Craig, Gingarelli, Horton, Loughlin. Resolution of intention passes nine zero.
The next is petition number 7014. Although a quorum is not present, the committee recommends the council pass a resolution to extend the corporate limits of the city of Missoula to include a certain tract of land being all that portion of the northeast one quarter of the southwest one quarter of Section 5 Township 13 North Range 19 West Principal Meridian Montana lying northerly of the north northerly right-of-way limit of Interstate 90 and easterly of the easterly right-of-way limit of Grant Creek Road, more commonly known as the Ryan parcel for which the owners Grant Creek Village Incorporated have petitioned through petition number 7014, and I would so move.
Is there any discussion? Is there any public comment? Call the roll, please.
Rosenleaf, Sampson, Shea, Wood, Craig, Gingarelli, Horton, Loughlin, Potts. Resolution passes nine zero.
Does the committee of the whole have anything to report this evening, Mr. Sampson?
Not only that, I would urge the council members to read the information on the report from the committee of the whole and remind you that there will be another committee of the whole meeting this Wednesday at seven or 7:30, I believe it's...
It's in the front of your budget, and I can't even remember now.
It's either seven or 7:30, and I'll announce it later after I reread it again.
All right. We'll go now to comments of city council members. Mr. Potts? Mr. Sampson?
I have talked to the committee chairman meeting particularly on Tuesday and probably after this week, why we'll attempt to move up committee meetings somewhat on Tuesdays to so that we will be able to more fully use our time and not encroach on the evening quite so much on it. The other, I guess, as a matter of information on PAZ, I'm acting chair of PAZ in the absence of Jack Reedy. Inasmuch as next week it would appear as though there will not be a super quorum here, I would ask that we will not take action on the rezoning on Brook Street until such a time as appears at least more of the council will be present.
Mr. Horton?
Yes, I have two unrelated items. The first is related to our late-night session, 2:30 or so in the morning. I was trying to make a point about the South Hills overlay plan and the fact that the present zoning there allows four to five times the density in some areas that the plan calls for. The proposed development we were discussing came in at about twice the density that the plan calls for, and the point I was trying to make is, no matter how recent that zoning, it's obsolete when you propose to cover the mountainside in that area with 40-foot lots, especially in light of the plan. And one reason I was pushing so hard to try to get an enforcement of the South Hills overlay plan is because if we can't do it in the South Hills, we can't do it on the North Hills, we can't do it in the Rattlesnake. Overlay plans don't count if they're not enforced and if we don't have specific zoning that implements those. The second thing is, and I'll preface this just a minute with a little bit of discussion about how things on the council have impressed me, and that is a total lack of partisanship on the party council members, a total lack of pettiness on the party council members. I have noticed some lack of diligence on the party council members because there are things about this South Hills overlay plan I would have expected the older members to have warned us about, to have sort of guided us through. That didn't happen. And since this is coming into the season of partisan politics, I would like to note for the record that we only have one Democrat absent, but every single Republican is gone.
A shot across the bow. Mike, this is Craig.
Last week during the long meeting, I had a friend in the audience for practically the whole meeting, and...
She's no longer your friend?
Yeah. But sometimes she'd, depending on what people were saying for the public hearings, she'd give a thumbs up or thumbs down, and sometimes she'd look at me and cross her eyes. And she got a couple of phone calls the next day that the camera had caught her doing this, so beware of the audience, you never know. I want to thank the Downtown Business Association for lunch last week. They're an interesting, nice group of people and very dedicated to Missoula.
Thank you. This is Gingarelli.
Last Thursday, I attended, I was present at a very well-attended open space committee meeting that was open to the community, and they gave a very informative slide presentation and also a verbal presentation on open space areas around the valley. And I did talk to them about possibly giving this same presentation at a council meeting, and they were receptive to that, so I was thinking maybe next Monday would, might be an appropriate time. If we don't have any other public hearings on for a special presentation, and I'll talk to you, Mayor Chemus, about that. Also, I met with the three county commissioners today regarding their feelings about resource planning, kind of in preparation to the referral that I made to PAZ that we will talk about tomorrow, and also talked to them about their proposal for a carrying capacity study that they are initiating for the Missoula Valley, and I thought that was a good idea. They're planning this in coordination with OCD, Rural Planning, and Health Department. And I think it's kind of a nice complement to the 2020 Vision Conference and hoping that lots of interesting items will come out of both conferences. Finally, I am very supportive of a time limit on council meetings, so I'm glad to see that's been referred to rules.
Mr. Wood?
I was depressed to see that the planning board passed the change in the comp plan for Walmart, Mont, Walmart. I guess it seems like we're going to have a strip from here to Lolo and then from Lolo down to Darby before it's over.
Ms. Rosenleaf?
I don't know if all of you saw the paper this morning. There was a photograph of the Japanese parliament at a late-night meeting, and three of them had their heads on the desk and two appeared to be sleeping in their chairs. Reminded me of last week, although it didn't get quite that bad. Have a couple of other items. I've had several phone calls regarding the start of music at the Iron Horse Pub Beer Garden, and that was quite an issue during the time when I was campaigning, and I know you've talked about it here before. It seems like we may need to visit about that. Apparently, the music was going on until 1:30 in the morning on Thursday evening, and the residents were upset about that. I'm also looking for some other people to sit with me on a subcommittee to work with the Missoula Housing Authority regarding some management problems and grievances for residents. Curtis is interested, is there anyone else who's interested in that?
I'd be interested.
Okay, great, thank you. And then you have a memo on your desk. I'm going to be out of town for a couple of weeks. I'll miss the one council meeting and the start of the budget meetings. I'll bring part of it on the airplane with me for a little light reading, and I'll be back in town and at the meeting on the 22nd.
Mr. Loughlin?
I'd like to speak tonight on regards to the subcommittee on the relocation of the transfer site for Mountain Lion. As chairman of that committee this afternoon, we had a meeting that was attended by some physical handicapped people, at which time they voiced their concern that the story is out on the streets in Missoula, that Missoula is going to abolish the handicap transportation, and they came in protest. And I would like to take this time to assure the people of Missoula and especially our handicapped citizens that there's no way that that thought ever materialized, that it is a vicious rumor. The only thing that we're trying to do regarding the Mountain Lion is relocate their transfer point from where it is presently now at Petty and Main to another part of downtown, and it has nothing, absolutely nothing, to do with the handicapped people. Thank you.
This is Shea.
My feeling on public hearings is that this is probably the truest and purest benefit of democracy. I like to hear the people come and respond and give us their strong feelings. It's very difficult to do it when we have too many public hearings. I think we need to limit the number of public hearings rather than the people who want to give testimony, if that's possible. I do have a prior commitment and will not be able to be at the 2020 Vision Planning Conference, but I look forward to the outcomes, and I know that it's going to be a very important process. Mr. Julian LePage called me today and said that Alex Stepansov will return for the first band concert, that the band has been successful in fundraising. I think their request is down several, I guess about $1,000 from last year, perhaps not quite that much, $7,900. And Mr. LePage said after, he travels all over, he thinks that Farmer's Market and the Missoula City Band are the two best things that Missoula has, and I kind of agree with him. I saw Mr. Deemer, Eugene Deemer, down at Farmer's Market on Saturday, and I've been going for about 20 years, and it certainly is a really fun thing to do in Missoula. There's a lot of things that are fun, and the things that are free are also have an added benefit. And then another item, at Public Safety tomorrow, I'm going to ask for a special subcommittee to scope and look at the problem identified with the residential parking district program. As you all know, we've talked about this several years ago, it's come up again. There has been a recent university-related committee, and several council members did sit on that subcommittee looking for possible solutions and options for the program, and our own Chief Gibson has his kind of recommendation for a more of a neutral committee that would look at this and perhaps look at it over the summertime, and hopefully, we would have some possible solutions for fall. I'm asking members of the Public Safety Committee to submit one or two names, people that you feel would be good volunteers to sit on this committee, and if you give them to me tomorrow, tomorrow's meeting. If you would enjoy chairing that committee or if you would like yourself to be on the committee, please identify that as well. The group will be small, I think it needs to be small, but we want to include all the various factions, and hopefully, what we will do is help to have a resolution before fall. That's very important. From the Missoula Public Library, Dragon Tales, the library's annual summer reading program began today. The theme is Dragon Tales, and all kids can participate. This is free by picking up a folder at the children's desk or the circulation desk. Readers, young readers, keep track of the books they read and earn prizes and coupons throughout the summer, and I know that kids really look forward to those prizes that they earn from all the books that they read. And the library card is still free at the public library, so that's another free thing. One thing that isn't free but's a lot of fun is the Damn Yankees. The Washington Senators do a lot better in the play than the Damn Yankees, but it's lots of fun and very happy music put on by the Missoula Children's Theater, Community Theater. I went to that and had a good time. The birthday party for MCAT was a lot of fun. Curtis was there, the mayor was there, Dennis Taylor was there, and there are lots of other people who were there. Hopefully, and that was on Thursday evening also, there are several things on Thursday. Hopefully, we will be able to get MCAT in the Rattlesnake and have continuation of the programming. It's been wonderful to have it there, but it's been much too short, and we do not enjoy being hostage or being held hostage, so hopefully, with Mr. Hilliard and MCAT and the city can arrive at some solution. Thank you.
Any comments from staff? Mr. Sampson?
I forgot one item, and I would like to appoint Kelly Rosenleaf as the city council representative to the Bitterroot Resource Conservation Development Board. to the Bitter Resource Conservation Development Board.
Thank you.
Mayor Council, Dennis Taylor, Chief Administrative Officer. I have an announcement of several meetings that are scheduled for the rest of this week that, one is that the Vision 2020 Steering Committee will have their final meeting before the conference on Saturday at 7:00 AM on Thursday, June 11th at the Missoula County High School Administration Building on South Avenue. This week, the Missoula Redevelopment Agency's regular meeting, which is traditionally meant on Wednesdays, will be held on Thursday, June 11th at noon at Capers in the Florence Hotel. And Thursday night, there's a special meeting on design review and other planning-related activities with our counterparts from the city of Bozeman. I know that there's an awful lot of activity and meetings scheduled these next several weeks, but if you have the time, I'd encourage members of the City Council to attend that meeting with our friends from Bozeman.
If I could just reinforce that a little bit. Part of the reason that we asked the folks from Bozeman to come over is that they've developed an approach to design review that I think gets around some of the problems that arose with the First and Chestnut property. And so if anybody here is interested in a different way of, of dealing with problems like that, we'd really encourage you to come to this meeting on Thursday night.
And I have a final request for City Council members and members of the administration, the division and department heads who are available Saturday morning at the Missoula Vision 2020 Conference. We're looking for volunteers who will act as conference staff and if you're able to perform that function, you need to be at the Sentinel High School at 8:30 AM and meet with Phil Smith. If you're planning to be able to be a member of the staff, if you would let me know after the City Council meeting, I'd appreciate it. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Dennis. Other staff comment? Chuck.
On your desk tonight, it's the budget in the front is a tentative schedule. Al basically set that schedule based on last year's schedule, which having evening meetings, although it was sometimes cut into people's personal plans, did seem to draw the attendance and cut down on the council's time in just hearing the same thing that they had heard years before. Used to be the council would spend about 20, 30 hours hearing the department head presentation and last year the council brought the focus back to what information they really want to have in the budget and answering of their questions. So for that process to work, it does work best if people have read the materials and come with their questions. There will be short presentations given and then most, most of the evening, every session will be count, questions and answers from the council members and just council discussion. These are obviously your meetings, the mayor's given you the executive budget and it's the council's budget now, so if you want to change the schedule, just have to come to a consensus as a council of the whole and this was the, what Al felt seemed to work last year. This Wednesday, we'll take up with the overview, which would be focusing on the mayor's letter, the budget highlights section, any revenue questions, which there might be, and then going right into the council, mayors, and at least part of the finance budget. We'll try to cover as much as we can this week and then any rollover Al thought we could do on Wednesday afternoon the following week. But any of the, any of the council who wants different meetings, different meeting times, change in process, just bring it up at any of these meetings and, and the schedule is flexible every week to week because you just set the meetings for sure at the end of this meeting.
Any other staff comment? Is there any new business? If there's not, we'll go to referral items. Chuck.
Okay, there's one that was too late for the agenda and it's a request by Chuck Sterns regarding contract award for sales of lots in the Ben Hughes and Fellowship Heights subdivisions to finance and license. Request by Mayor Chemis regarding the FY93 budget to Budget Committee of the Whole. Request by Dan Rogers regarding leaf roller infestation on box elders to conservation. Request by Kathy Olson regarding design arts grants to finance and license. Request by Chuck Sterns regarding claims to finance and license. Request by Chuck Sterns regarding YWCA renewal of request for Title I funds for transitional housing project to finance and license. Request by Chuck Sterns regarding transfer of surplus, of surplus MRA wise computer to Revalley County Sheriff to finance and license. Request by Chuck Sterns regarding FY92 audit contract to finance and license. And request by Chuck Sterns regarding budget transfers to finance and license. Request by John Mangiamelli regarding Dalton addition summary plat to plat annexation and zoning. Request by John Mangiamelli regarding final plat submittal for Brookside on the Rattlesnake Phase 5 to plat annexation and zoning. Request by Philip Meckling regarding enterprise commercial EC overlay zoning district to plat annexation and zoning. Request by Norm Loughlin regarding progress of Mountain Lion transfer site to public safety. Request by Pete Lawrenson regarding Dare contract to public safety. Request by Doug Harvey regarding award of contract for Project 92-025, 1700 block of Ernest, curb and sidewalk improvements to public works. Request by Curtis Horton regarding resolution of intent to convert our first bus to alternative energy by one year from today to public works. Request by Joe Aldeary regarding 1992, 1993 state maintenance contract to public works. Request by Joe Aldeary regarding paving of Duncan Drive to public works. Request by Bruce Bender regarding acceptance of sanitary sewer easements for Lincoln Heights subdivision to public works. Request by Curtis Horton regarding limiting number of public hearings that can be scheduled per council session to three to the Rules Committee. Request by Curtis Horton regarding possibility of having time cut off on council meetings from midnight to Rules Committee. Request by Al Sampson regarding land use public hearings to Rules Committee.
Any other referrals? Ms. Rosenle.
I'd like to refer the noise problem from the brew pub to, would it be AOR? Is that who would take it up? Al?
Probably Public Safety.
You think it would be, has it been discussed in Public Safety before?
I think the noise problem has been in Public Safety before. We had a noise, we had a noise problem down around the community creamery and then we had the same noise problem before and I think with Public Safety, Jim, you're-
I think because you want the police staff there, you probably want it in Public Safety, so they will be at that meeting anywhere.
Okay, that's fine, to Public Safety then.
We, we do have an ordinance, you're aware of that?
Right, and they call and the, the, actually the bar owner has said that the police have been there, measured the noise and said it's not a problem, but I was in some people's house on Friday night and you could hear it inside the house and they live on Spruce.
When we have live bands though, we do, we always have an agreement that they will quit by 11 and that's strictly enforced.
That has not happened. They were playing at midnight.
Was this a live band?
Yes.
Okay.
It wasn't out in the circle, it was in the beer garden. And the residents stated that it was until after 1 o'clock on Thursday evening.
All right. Any other referrals? If not, then we'll go on to announcements of committee meetings. Before we do the, the Committee of the Whole meeting, I realize that there's a choice to be made there about when to start and when to finish. One of the things that we've had requests from staff, especially those with younger families, that 7 o'clock meetings can be very difficult where you simply don't have enough time to get home and, and have a dinner with your family and get back to a meeting. 7:30 always seems to work better in those situations, but it may be that it just pushes you too late into the evening, so it depends a little bit on when you need to have it. We're trying to develop a family-friendly organization here as much as we can.
I have no objections to starting those at 7:30, it's probably more convenient for council people. It is my feeling that two hours is about all that you can get good participation out of the committee, so we would attempt to start those evening meetings at 7:30 and we'd do our utmost to get them over by 9:30 and at any outside possibility, we'll shut them off at 10.
Administration ordinances and resolutions.
We've got some more items on the agenda, so I guess 2 o'clock on Thursday.
Finance and license.
3 o'clock on Thursday.
Plat annexation and zoning.
4:30 on Tuesday. Elaine, you figure you can get Public Safety in a half hour?
Well, it looks like it might be a very full half hour if we have four items there, but I'll do my best to, to limit things. We may have to just extend it.
Perhaps if, you, you have some people coming at 4 o'clock for your meeting, but some of the new items could be perhaps handled before the 4 o'clock. Perhaps we could start Public Safety at, or Public Works at 2 and start Public Safety perhaps at 3:30 and-
We could start Public Safety at 3:30. I, I have something else tomorrow, so I wouldn't be able to be at Public Works that early because I didn't know about it, but yes, we could start Safety at 3:30.
Dan Rogers is coming for conservation tomorrow to talk about the green leafy rollups or whatever they are. And he has canceled a meeting, so he could come to our meeting at 2 tomorrow for conservation.
How long will your meeting take?
Well, he's going to give a presentation, maybe a half hour would do.
Okay, maybe we can, this will be kind of a transitional period. Next week, we'll have to try something a little differently, but maybe we could start, see your, 2:30 you want yours?
I'll start conservation at 2 and maybe Public Works could start at 2:30.
Yeah, 2, 2:30 and then 3:30 and 4:30.
This is Gingerelli.
Elaine, just to remind you, Ken Stolt sent out a memo to all of the people who were on that RPP committee and it said 4 PM.
I have it in front of me, Chris.
Okay.
But it won't be the first item, in other words, we'll start some of the other things that we have to do in Public Safety and take those first and then we'll, we'll take this at 4 o'clock.
Okay, yeah, because I don't, I think it'll take longer than a half an hour.
We will not finish that tomorrow. We can continue.
I would urge the committee chairman in all cases, if we can, to keep our meetings within the timeframe that we are hoping for.
Okay. Plat annexation and zoning, did you say Tuesday at 4:30?
Correct.
Public Safety.
That's going to be at 3:30.
Public Works.
Yeah, 2:30, Tuesday.
Rules Committee. Let's see, Committee of the Whole. On the fire station.
The Committee of the Whole meeting will be starting at 7:30 on Wednesday.
Is that the Budget Committee of the Whole then? There's, right now on the agenda, two committees of the whole, one on the fire station and one on the budget.
I thought we had done the one on the fire station at least for a while. So we will not meet on the fire station at least until we get some indication of the RFPs or unless something comes up that we need to meet on.
Okay, Budget Committee of the Whole, Wednesday at 7:30 PM?
Correct.
Cable TV Committee.
There is no meeting this week of cable TV.
Conservation. Zoning Subcommittee. Okay. Administration ordinances and resolutions, Thursday at 2. Finance and license, Thursday at 3. Plat annexation and zoning, Tuesday at 4:30. Public Safety, Tuesday at 3:30. Public Works, Tuesday at 2:30. No Rules Committee meeting, no Committee of the Whole. Budget Committee of the Whole, Wednesday at 7:30. Cable TV, no meeting. Conservation, Tuesday at 2 and no zoning Subcommittee meeting.
Anything further?
If not, we'll go home. On an average, these meetings only last- On an average, these meetings only last...